I shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We shall have roll call, please, Stacy.
I'm Jennifer Delixton.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Krill.
Yes.
Mayor Waller.
Yes. Welcome, everyone. We shall start once again with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. I pulled one, I pulled this quote from Ms. Ellen Degeneres, and perhaps Ellen can lighten the day up here for us. My grandpa, my grandmother started walking five miles a day when she was sixty. She's ninety-seven now, and we don't know where the heck she is. My attempt at humor, or her attempt at humor. We shall move on to approval of tonight's agenda, but before we do that, I would like to add an item, and then I'll throw it back to the council to see if they have anything additional they would like to add. But under ordinances and resolutions, I would like to add item D. Appointment of Blaine Hill as acting manager. Start date to be determined by city council at a later date. That's item D. And I'll bring it back to the council if they would like to take any, or make any other additions or corrections to tonight's agenda. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will also move approval of the agenda as listed with that addition.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, tonight we have no public hearings, so we shall move on to reading and approval of minutes from our October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
I will move approval of the October fourteenth regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve our October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we will move on to the consent agenda, or condensed version of those same minutes from October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from ten fourteen twenty-five.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five condensed version of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next before us is our consent agenda, which tonight consists of audit of city bills, our September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five planning commission minutes, revenue and expenditure report, our September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five tree board minutes, and an application to conduct excluded bingo for women of today. And I guess I can move approval of those items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. I will bring it back to the council for any discussion on any of those items.
See under item forty-three that we're obviously making progress on the Wells Park concession?
Yeah, so we got, um, we got our plumbing in, we had the concrete poured down, and still working, to still work with the state on some plumbing code stuff. But, yeah, still moving ahead.
Great.
Exciting stuff. Okay, any other discussion, any other items? Hearing none? All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next before us, under petitions, requests, and communications, we have a couple of guests here tonight joining us, and the first person that's gonna come up before us is Tatori, I believe that's, did I say it right?
Yes.
Tatori Marion. She's with the Small Business Administration. So, Tatori, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon.
Would you please step up to the microphone and just state your name, and just for the recording, because all our meetings are recorded?
Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Tatori Marion. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration, and I'm here tonight to let you guys know and get your help in soliciting community members to take advantage of our low-interest loans that we have available for the disasters that happened July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth in Stevens Counties and its contiguous counties. The deadline to apply is December first. We don't have a disaster loan outreach center available now. You can go online and apply by going to sba.gov/disaster. And if you could just get that out to your survivors and community members, we would appreciate that.
Tatori, can you maybe share with us? Maybe you can, or maybe you can't. Maybe just generally speaking, was there a fair amount of applicants?
We had a good number of applicants so far. We can't share information and amounts.
I figured that.
But we've had a good turnout via online and when our disaster loan outreach center was here in this building.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think you could disclose, obviously, the, you know, I just wanted generally, kind of a general statement as to how it went, and the process in general.
It went good, I'm still here, so that's a good thing.
Well, we really appreciate you coming out and helping, because I know the residents in town really appreciate it too, so.
Okay. Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you.
Mark? The floor is yours, brother.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, how are you?
Good.
Everybody doing good tonight?
I'm sorry, but Mark is with Inspecron just for the, for people in the audience, just so you know.
First of all, can, can I suggest that the next item on the agenda we scratch for now? Table it for a couple of weeks or a year? Okay, maybe not. Okay, the first thing that I have on the pile here is actually your activity for this year so far, to date. The number, the first number is the number of permits that have been issued in the city of Morris. The second are the fees collected. And the third number on there is actually the valuation of the projects done in the city as of October last Friday, how about that? Whatever it was. That's when I need to report up quick. Pardon my throat here. I haven't been able to talk for a couple of weeks. Which is annoying, because I can't yell at anybody. All right, the second one here, I wrote this on the twentieth, the second document here. It's just an example of why we raised the flat rate. And this was done actually for, I believe, Castle Rock, no, was it Castle Rock Township? No, Rockville. This was for Rockville, because they requested it. I kind of threw some numbers together out of theirs, put some overhead numbers and that sort of thing. And I could have got it to you earlier, but I just didn't have time. I've actually just got out of the hospital a week and a half ago with blood clots. That's why I can't talk. So. No big deal, it's just I can't talk. And I got busy doing other things. Anyway, so this kind of explains the cost that we incur on, I just picked a roofing permit. Okay? With some generic numbers in it. And as you can see that, well, we collect seventy-five dollars on a hundred-dollar permit. But what was costing us could cost us seventy-seven dollars plus to do that inspection. Now, we make that up mostly on bigger projects with valuations. Houses, apartment buildings, down in country over here that we're doing. That sort of thing. But the costs of other items for us have gone up quite a bit as well. Our insurance jumped quite a bit. Workman's comp even jumped up a number of thousands. Our landlord decided to hit me up, I don't know why. He'd think he would leave me alone, but he doesn't. So we're having to cover extra costs, and the cost of labor is also going up on me too, because they have costs. And in order to keep these guys around, I have to pay them more. It's kind of a thing. Now, if you look on there, it says that I might be paying a guy forty dollars an hour, right? Okay, so I might be paying that guy forty dollars an hour, but he's a certified building official. And I can point right down the road here to one of your neighbors that has a limited building official, not a certified building official, so he's not allowed to do commercial. He's giving thirty-nine dollars an hour plus severance, insurance package and everything else. So my guys aren't getting paid, you know, way over and above what other people get paid when they work for a municipality. And that's another thing, too, when people get into that position as a municipality in-house, that does cost the city a lot more money than having a company like me take on that burden. So, and the liability of all that besides, because I don't have a municipal umbrella to live under. So if I was actually working as an employee here, I wouldn't be liable for anything that I do. The city can't get sued. But now that I'm contracted with you, that's on me. That means I can get sued if things go wrong. That's why I don't have an insurance policy in there. But you'll see, they recovered two million, four million per occurrence. Yes, you'll get that every year. You'll get it from our insurance agency. So we're covered at the level of a structural engineer, not at the level of a building official. Because we have a lot of valuation that we take care of. Uh, let's see, the next document here, and I'll get quicker on this. Just shows the difference in one from another. Everything else is not changing, everything else is staying the same. The flat rates are the only ones that are gonna be going up. And I got something to share at the end of this one, that's good. I might bring those back down, I'll get to that. Then the next document behind it is your nineteen ninety-four Uniform Building Code Table 1A, which is a valuation table printed out by the legislature. It's in the statutes, you can find it there. This is nineteen ninety-four. The one that's attached to it behind it is our wonderful legislature doing it in twenty twenty-five, which is what we're supposed to be using. Inspecron doesn't do that. Nobody's yelled at us yet, so we're not doing anything about it. Other areas do this. Other city attorneys require their jurisdictions to do it. I won't do that to a jurisdiction, not a single one that we have, anywhere. So if you, if you start doing the comparisons, you'll see how high the twenty twenty-five goes as opposed to the nineteen ninety-four as we start to escalate in valuation of projects. Because in, in our opinion, it's not justified that it goes that high. We're supposed to be using evaluation tables, might be from the ICC as far as the construction cost nationwide. If I showed that to you guys that flipped, we may use that either. It, it tells you that the astronomical cost across the board for construction, per construction type and occupancy, is, is, it's out there. So we don't do that, we use common knowledge, which isn't that common anymore, I guess. That's what we do instead. The last thing I just brought with there was a copy of our contract that we signed some years ago. Just so you could go through it and review it if you wanted to. You'll see that there's some items in there that we say we're gonna charge for. Like I'm at this meeting. You didn't get charged last venue, we could charge this venue. We have a fire marshal on staff that it says in there we're gonna charge eighty-five dollars an hour for. I've never charged for that in my life. Pete is our fire marshal on staff through, certified through the state fire marshal's office, Ryan Coombs. Uh, he's been to the East Coast recently and passed the one we've classed out there at the academy. And then he got the blessing from the state. But that's not one of those things we charge for. There's a lot of things we don't charge for, we just consider it part of what we do. If it becomes a total pain in the, pick any part you want. If it becomes a situation like that, that's what those fees are for. Say we have a contractor that's calling us twelve times and rescheduling even, and not having their work done. Well, it comes about the sixth time we've driven out there, we're gonna go, that's enough of this, pal, we can't do this anymore. Either get it right or forget it, you know? And then charge them for an extra trip out there. If we're gonna be looking at the same thing six times, because you weren't ready five of them, you know? That's what those clauses are in there for. But not for me coming here and talking to you, or our fire marshal service, or after-hour service. My guys talk on the phone all weekend, you can call me at a weekend. I'm not gonna charge you for it. Doesn't make any sense. Now, if you called me every Saturday and we talked for three hours, yeah, we might have to start charging for it. But if it's just for a question of any sort, or something needs to be taken care of, we handle it. You won't claim that from any other contracted company in this state. I guarantee that. We all come from the field, we don't come from above. We don't come from anything else but working out there, getting dirty. That's why we're all busted up now, we talk funny. But, yeah, it's just the way it is. So, my apologies for having to take the flat rates that go up. And I told you there was gonna be a little bit of dent. We are just implementing, we just started it, and we had our first dip together on, uh, in the beginning of the month. We have two, two meetings a year with everybody in our crew. And we broke out this new software called ViewSpec. Now, what it is, it's, it's a virtual software for doing inspections that, well, it does a couple of things. We can, we can interact with the contractor, the homeowner, on their device. Not only that, but I can see where they are. So when I put this into the program, I put who I'm dealing with, the address of the place. Say he's gonna be right here inspecting that wall. I'm supposed to be looking at that. Well, I put the address in, I call his phone, he lets me in, I can look at that wall. Now, if he's full of baloney and he's blocked down the street, my software says, hey, Tom, you're not even in the right building. Would you get over where you're supposed to be? And then if I snap a picture of that wall and say, hey, Tom, can you go over here to the American flag? Turn right and go around back to that corner. And I snap another picture, and he's standing over there, I know it. Now I know he's lying to me. So, the software, and then after that, it gives us a photo and video recording of the entire thing and that story. So there is no, he said, he said, they, there's no, well, Mark, you did miss that, and it shows right here. Okay, well, I did miss something there. Or whatever the case may be. Insurance claim comes up. Insurance company says it wasn't done right. Yeah, that's right there, look. We looked at it and it was right. So it was something else that went wrong. So, my point on that is there's two things that's gonna happen with it. One, we're gonna track, well, once we get it moving, we have to get the contractors involved. That's when the price of a hundred and twenty-five dollars comes down. We don't have to spend all that money doing it. So now we can bring the cost down on those. But we gotta get them, enough of them to do it for me to bring that number back into where we want it to be. One of the things, right now, you know, when we do a roof, insurance company does not allow me or my, my crew to walk up on that roof, because we might get hurt. We have to do it by ourselves. From now on, when we get them involved, before they step off of that, well, when they do the tear-off, they're supposed to let us know they're doing the tear-off. We get in there, we take their phone, and we walk all over their roof. I can draw their phone, by the way. I can turn their camera on from my computer with that software. So if it's dark and they, oh, you're not gonna be able to see it, it's dark, and they go, yeah, I can, I just turn your flashlight on. I'll demonstrate for you some, give it. Takes a little time for us to get up. A few minutes, but, and I'm not as good at it as my guys are. And so, I would bring one of them to actually run, I can do it real good. I would walk around out there and you could tell me anything you want. Okay, anyway, so that is coming up. And believe you me, if we get that to work, the cost will come down. And it's our goal to get that to work, so we're gonna be pushing it to get this out there, make sure we do this. Because that will save everybody a lot of time, money, and just be better all around, even for the environment, we're not driving all over the place, right? So, anyway, that's mine. Does anybody have any questions now, on anything? And if you do, you can always call me. Well, she's not gonna be here, I gave you my number, so. Rather upsetting, I'll tell you.
Do we, is that, do we have to take action on this?
No, he was just, he was just coming to share some information, answer any questions anyone has.
Well, thank you for coming in, Mark. Any questions from the council before Mark?
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's been wonderful working with you.
Thank you, you too.
On our dealings with our bathrooms at our park, with the state, I'm getting, we've been going in circles with them, and how frustrating it is for Joe Public that's doing it when we're going through to try to find records of twenty-five, thirty years ago on stuff. I mean, what part of that can you help us or do you?
I was gonna bring up the state plumbing division. Okay, they have gotten a little bit better, but they just brought on like eight new people downtown, I think, seven or eight. So they're getting faster, they're still eight to twelve weeks out. I actually, I actually got one of their letters in the other day. So they belong to one of the other jurisdictions out there, our, Kimble Elementary School. I sent it to Bill, because he does my state projects there. Bill sends me an email back, he says, great, we finally got the letter, they've been using that bathroom since September of twenty twenty-four. So, that's true. They are backed up well. They have got, while we got in trouble for it, we've got the water softener conditioning system. So on our last meeting last spring, the state had to come up top for two hours about not making that mistake. That every single project commercial, if I move a toilet two inches, they wanna, they wanna review that. Or, I don't know what they do, they're gonna come out slap my hand again, I guess. What they don't know, I don't know who your contractor is on that line. Is that, is that, um,
Rob Needham?
It's who?
Isn't it Rob Needham?
Oh, I thought it was, uh.
No, Aaron.
Yeah. That's who, right? Okay, anyway, I talked to him the other day, because we do this with all plumbers. And I wish he wouldn't regard this, because we're in trouble. We do not wait for the state. I'm not kidding, we do not wait for the state. I don't care if it's a state project, or your project, or somebody else's. We ask for three things. We want, we ask for every single item in that to be photographed, videoed, and recorded. We ask that the master plumber, if he has any little mess in his mind that something isn't gonna be quite right, upsize it or change it now. Put it in for your concrete. And hopefully, when the letter comes back, we're not gonna be chipping up concrete. And that's how we do it, because we're not gonna hold your project up twelve weeks. I was a contractor, I could come back and slap your hat. You told me I had to wait for somebody to tell me that. I really would have. So no, we don't wait for that. We do proactive things like that to get, and I know that one's, I, I think we're chugging it, go on, say, get the stuff in the ground, get the concrete, we'll deal with it later. Okay? And we know there's a state guy running around out here. He gets on us once in a while about it, you know? It just happens. Okay? We just get in trouble once in a while, just because we did. You wanna push the envelope already? Here, come join us, we'll do it with you. Okay, that was my whole spiel. I can talk for hours, I learned how to do that when I started doing ministry, okay?
We'll give your throat a rest.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for coming in, Mark. Appreciate all the work you guys do for us, too. We're pretty pleased with that. We're good. All right. Thank you, Mark. Next up before us, we have city manager's resignation. So the council will have to take some action on, first of all, this letter, and, and then in, within that letter, there was a request to shorten her, in her employment contract states that she is to give city council sixty-day notice, and she has requested that we reduce that to thirty-nine days. So those are the couple of action items. First of all, you'll have to accept the resignation letter, and probably with that included request reducing the sixty-day term down to thirty-nine days. So, throw it back over to the council, you can have some discussion on that.
What went with the sixty days with respect to the contract? Was there?
There was nothing.
No stipulation on anything, other than just we requested that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sad to see you go, but obviously you must have a better opportunity, or, I know you said you're moving closer to family, so. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation and to accept the thirty-nine days instead of the sixty.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Yeah, and I too will did all the same comments as Councilmember Salvi. Two years doesn't even hardly seem possible that you've been here. You look back at what we've accomplished over this last two years, and I, I can feel good about it, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the city manager's resignation. I will just ask for a voice vote on that, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we shall move on to ordinances and resolutions. Our first resolution before us is a resolution approving state airport fund grant agreement with Minda for the FBO hangar door. Can I let City Manager Shrupp speak to that?
Yeah, so back in August, we looked at approving four state grants for the airport. So two of them have come back with contracts. So these, the next two that you'll be doing, one is for the FBO hangar door replacement, and the other is for a Jet A fuel truck. So both of the projects are a sixty-forty split, and the forty percent is coming from a donation for both of those. So, wonderful, our new engineer has been really great at going after some of these opportunities, funding opportunities for things that we need, so very, very happy with that. Lot of movement going on at that airport, which is super exciting. I think we talk about that every time. So I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve the resolution for both of the airport grant agreements, the FBO hangar door replacement, and the Jet A fuel truck.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that resolution from anybody here? Nobody received any outside correspondence leading up to the meeting? I usually like to ask that, because sometimes people like to speak to different things, and if nobody received anything, I guess we'll just move on, and we'll put it to a, I'll just ask for a roll call vote if there's no other discussion on it, or?
Just with that, the jet refueling truck, processors, has it been bid? Or is there anything, a chance of a local company that builds trucks to take care and help us with that, or?
I'm sure we could look. For this, we had to get a couple bids to, and quotes, so we do have a couple.
We haven't got a final?
No.
This is an estimate or a ballpark on a sixty-forty? Okay, I'm just curious there, to have a local company that does that and employs local people, if we have a chance to?
As much utilization as possible.
Yeah, if we can benefit some of our local employees and companies. Yeah, if we can benefit some of our local employees and companies to do something for us. I would highly recommend for us to make sure that they're aware and to, to try to do that if we can, if it's competitive. That's all I had.
All right. Any other further discussion?
One other quick one and just contact person is still listing you on these. And if that representation changes at any time, must give immediate notification to the state. I guess is that something that we want to do with us? Having a, a forty day, is, is there somebody else that we can list or whoever we have for an interim?
Yeah.
Does that make sense for us to, to list you as the contact person that'll need to be changed?
So all of the stuff with the state and FAA, they all have, um, me and Silas and, um, Whitney, our finance director. But yeah, I can let them know as we sign these ones that their next contact will, um, most likely for the city will be probably Whitney, I would say. Just because they.
Just, yeah, we're going to have to update it and short notice if we can avoid having to do that just right away. Makes sense.
Yep.
Yep.
That's a good idea. Thanks for mentioning that, Jeff. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please, Stacy?
Councilmember Solby?
Yes.
Grails?
Yes.
Bellixson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, next resolution before us is a resolution approving state apart, state airport fund grant agreement with Minda for a Jet A fuel truck.
I think she did both.
I did both at the same time.
She said to approve both.
Both at the same time.
Correct.
Well, that's what I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
No.
So we've already done that. Great, thank you.
They were pretty much sixty-forty, all paid for.
Okay. All right. Then we will move on to the next resolution before us. Resolution establishing a city manager search committee. I guess I can speak to that.
Yeah.
I'll just speak to that. Um, yeah, it's been a few years ago since we went through this and I think we're all pretty familiar with, at least I am. I don't want to speak for the council, but, um, the process we used last time, uh, in keeping with open meeting law and all of that good stuff, we formed a search committee, which was made up of, uh, staff members, Whitney, uh, Stacy, and of course, uh, um.
Maggie.
Maggie, there you go, thank you. And myself and one other council member, I believe it was Jeff, right? Or who was that?
Yes, I believe it was, yeah.
So we made up the search committee and what we did is once, uh, we sat down and, and at that point, we were trying to, well, we really didn't know where to start, but we started with selecting DDA and we looked at different search firms and things like that. And, and then we reported all that information back. And then that's kind of how that communication worked through that whole process. We had a back and forth going on that way. Uh, knowing that in the end, the city council will make the final decision on how, you know, who we hire as the next city manager. Um, and if you'll recall, part of that process was we, we engaged, uh, as part of civic engagement, we, we selected a citizens panel and then we conducted three different, uh, interview stations a day of. And this, the, uh, search committee actually vetted, and that's important to note because, you know, and I think it's important to have staff involved, obviously, because they're going to be working for, with this person day in and day out. So it's important to have them involved in that, that decision process. So, um, we did, uh, have to vet, I think, from my memory, surgery rate. I can't remember how many candidates we had, but we did, we did vet down to the three finalists. And I think, uh, once we got that, to that point, then we conducted our interviews. And I thought personally, just looking back on that whole experience, I thought it went really smooth. Uh, David Drone and Associates, I thought did a great job. The communication process was, was, was excellent. Um, so I don't know, I'll just bring it back to the council and just get your thoughts. And if somebody wants to volunteer, I know I'll be on and I, I need, I would, I would like one, myself and one other person and plus the three staff positions.
I thought it went relatively smoothly, yes, including some different community members from different areas that I think was valuable when we did the interview process, when we got to that point. And, yeah, I was happy with how things went myself. I thought it was very open communication with the firm we used.
Well, and just so everybody knows, too, we all ranked, uh, the candidates and that citizens panel also ranked the candidates. So, you know, it, it's, it's important that we, you know, uh, involve the community and, and specific opinions. And I think we accomplished that last core round, so. I don't know, any other council members like to speak to it?
Wasn't there, wasn't there three, wasn't it the council?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't there three?
During the interview process?
Interview process, there was three different.
Yeah, we had three different rooms that we met at the library, city council chambers, and I think over at city hall, I think was where they were.
Yep.
You went through them, so you know.
Yep.
I did, I did like how that was set up and how that went.
Well, I know I talked to several members of that, of the citizens, members of the citizens at large that were part of that process and they really also expressed the same thing. They were, they appreciated, number one, being involved and being part of the decision-making process, so. So with that, we'll have to.
I know I received at, at least one email. I'm sure the rest of council did as well. This is something that you encouraged, right? So speaking up on that right now.
Yep, yep.
Did receive that, and I'm, I'm looking at the gentleman specifically who's sitting in front row, uh, and the one right behind him, requesting for, um, on the search committee, that there be someone from the outside public as well, not just city staff and city council. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, giving a, a community, obviously, we all live in the community and understand the community, but I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea with obvious the final decision coming from council. But then we would have to change our resolution as well, looking for a volunteer from outside as well. So there's that piece to it. Um, I did want to give voice to those that wrote, took the time to write emails as well.
Right. Well, and in fairness to the rest of the community, maybe that's something we should offer to everyone, maybe say that we're going to have, change the number from, you know, five to six. And, you know, I mean, granted, you know, we did have correspondence from Jim, but I think in fairness, if, if we're going to do something like that, maybe we offer it to maybe one brave soul at large, too. I don't know how we do it, but just want to be fair about.
I don't, I don't either.
Any thoughts, council?
Well, I mean, if, I, I, I don't disagree with that, uh, but I think we select a member from the community to do it. I don't know that you, I don't know how you'd do it anything otherwise, or we look at a volunteer pool and select, uh, one or two to represent.
You know, my thought is, my initial reaction when I read this, too, was the community is going to get an opportunity as we get into this interview process to be a part of this. And, you know, we could, obviously, we have one person that would be interested, so we know that for sure, uh, that maybe that person would be part of that process, too. So I don't know that it's really necessary we add a person to the, the committee itself, the hiring committee itself. Um, because you're going to have opportunities, there'll be opportunities later. I just think it's going to get kind of muddy the waters, I guess, so to speak. Not really muddy the waters, but I just, you know what I'm saying? I just, I don't know what you think. We're having a discussion here. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not either way.
Can I speak?
Sure.
So going through processes of, of different, how interviews, I did like how this one was set up. Um, I have interviewed like in Benson when they, um, they use DDA also. So if you go with them again, that they do this, too. But, um, during the interview process, they had a point in the evening where the public came in, and it happened in Granite Falls, too, where the public came in, got to ask, um, questions of the candidates. Um, that is a good way to get the public in mind.
So that's apart from the search committee and for the citizens panel and all that?
Because your search committee, you're going to be figuring out, are you going with the firm to be bringing that back to council? Are you doing that? Um, that's my take, um, on it. But I would add, when you do interviews during the day, um, like a lot of the Granite Falls, Benson, and I don't know if DDA did Granite Falls, but I know they did Benson. And it was an all-day process and at the end of the day, um, was a little appetizer thing and the community members got to come in and talk to all candidates.
Okay.
And.
I like that.
Yeah, and that gets the community in, it gets them to talk to the candidates, have conversations with the candidates. Um, and then they can give their input to council that way.
I like that idea.
I think that's a good way to do it because then that would involve, it, also, it's not trying to rush through right now. We, I mean, we have a search committee, we, the search committee is basically looking at a entity to, whatever the, to throw out there.
To do the executive search.
Yeah, to do the search, the executive search. So, um, that, yeah.
Well, I know.
The biggest thing would be to get community input, in my mind, on those interviews and asking and meeting the candidates and going through that way. Because you just, you'd have to open this up then and then.
I'm all for it.
Then, I mean, you'd have to open up this search committee to a community member and, I mean, we need to move on this somewhat sooner than later, so.
Any other thoughts from the council?
Yeah, I guess, like I say, I'm not necessarily opposed to having a community member on the search committee as a whole, but if that's the, the notion and, and I like that idea as well, having it more of an all-day thing. And not that, not that we did bad by that previously either. Um, I liked having the, the multiple rooms, but I like that idea of, of adding that as well. And I can be convinced that, you know, because to your point, it's whether we're going with the firm or not. That's the, that's the whole purpose of the search committee.
Yeah.
I just had it brought up to me in the last short term on when we do the interviews, for us to maybe take a little bit more time than what we did the last time, just to sit back and evaluate and to just, we pretty much went through and had our rankings and made offers just the same that it probably wouldn't hurt. We've, we're going through a process, it's going to take some time. So for us to step back and just analyze before we throw out an offer towards the tail end of our process.
I don't think we made an offer that day, though, did we? We just selected a candidate. Like, Becca, I can't remember how that went.
It don't, it wasn't that, that day. I don't know if it was the day after, so I don't re. Wasn't that long ago?
I think what you, yeah, what, I thought, to me, it was, there was a.
Because I know I was, it was during the day I got a phone call about it. So it wasn't that same day.
Okay.
You're screwed for thought to just, we're going through a big process and to lead our community, hopefully for the foreseeable future to come and to be our, our new voice to, to run our everyday operations for us, to, to sit back on what we learned.
Yep.
On those interviews and to just absorb. And if we have any questions or to do some homework from that process would be, I think, very valuable for us to step back and just review everything that we take in during that day.
Well, it's an important decision, you know, obviously selecting the next leader of our community. So, yeah, I, I think to your point, we, we, uh, we want to make sure we hire the best person for the job and we take our time and do it right.
And if somebody's looking at multiple different positions, yeah, the longer we wait. If somebody else takes them before we have a chance to take them, so I guess you sit around and can't make up your mind neither. If, if somebody's interviewing or looking at several different communities, you know?
Just generally speaking, right now, the market is pretty tight for city managers. So, you know, um, and just because of the time period we're in, I, I just think we need to kind of get rolling. And not that we want to rush into anything, but, um, also, we have, we have a, an obligation to be able to conduct city business. So I think there is a little bit of a sense of urgency here, so it may take us longer than we think to find the next candidate, so. Okay. Any other discussion on the search committee? I guess I'll ask and who would like to volunteer? I mean, I'll just bring it back to the council. If there, you want to arm wrestle each other for it, I don't care.
I had the honor last time, I gladly make room for somebody else to enjoy the experience.
I think that you did such a great job to that.
The experience that you had bring to that search committee is.
Oh, boy.
Invaluable.
Invaluable. I don't know, Jeff, how I could do.
It's an opportunity that doesn't come along too often, so it's your chance to jump on it. If nobody else is interested, I will do it again.
Okay.
But I definitely think it's a great, great chance for, for any of us to get involved and to, to help set the, how we're going to do it.
All right, and of course, I volunteered myself. Uh, would you like to put that in a form of a motion of some sort there, guys?
That was my resolution here.
Pardon?
The resolution here.
Okay, we got the resolution before us, yeah, establishing a city manager search committee. So, yeah, the resolution's right here before.
I'll move on to the resolution establishing a city manager search committee and council member Miller to list.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, uh, for the resolution establishing a city manager search committee. And once again, Stacy, I'll ask for roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Bellixson?
Yes.
Grails?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay. Next, uh, resolution before us is appointment of Blaine Hill as acting manager. Start date to be determined by city council at a later date. So I will bring it back to the, I'll, I want to speak to this a little bit first before I bring it back to the council for discussion. Um, like I had alluded to you earlier, um, you know, I've had a couple of calls to Patrick at DDA and him and I just talked just generally about the market. I just called and reached out to him just to get a, so I could get a pulse for where we're at with the current environment for city managers and, and he said it, of course, it is very tight. And given the time of the year that we're going into here, um, our finance director's indicated and shared with me that she just didn't really feel comfortable doing both jobs. If you'll recall, Whitney stepped in and acted as, uh, interim city manager last time when we had, uh, we went through this and like, once again, thanks Whitney for doing that. And, but given the time of the year that we're in right now, we're in go time. You know, it's budget, budget, budget right now. And Whitney had communicated to me that she just didn't feel that she could do justice to both jobs. So I think it's important, you know, our obligation, my obligation as your mayor is to, uh, to ensure that we have the ability and to run an efficient government and everything runs smooth. So that's why I thought it would be important for us to take, uh, some action. And we're, we're very fortunate, in my opinion, to have Blaine Hill here and he actually is in the audience tonight. And he has, um, uh, agreed to help us, get us through this interim period here. And of course, we don't need to say anything else about Blaine. He's, he led this team and this city for a lot of years. He's very familiar with our city. He understands budgets, very good at what he does in that area. So we're very lucky, I think, in that regard. So I'll, with that, I'll just kind of throw it back over to the city council and you can speak to any issues or concerns you may have. Teagan, is there anything I'm missing here? Um, did you want to speak to anything that would make, just to ensure we're? Doing things right, okay. I've already consulted with Joe and Teagan, so I, I think we're, we're doing things appropriately. So I'll just bring it back to the council.
I would concur with everything you said. I, I think it's great that we have, uh, Blaine here to take that role. Um, we've all worked with him before and enjoyed it. And, and I think that it's going to be, it could be a long search, maybe longer than we expect. And, and to keep everything moving along pace, I think it's, I think it's awesome. When you said it today, I was, I was like, wow, that's going to be, make me feel a lot better in the in-between as we're, we're making this search, so.
Uh, we'll have to work out, of course, the arrangements of his employment and all of that good stuff kinda goes without saying, but you know, we'll, we'll work all that stuff out later and I think Teagan was okay with, with that process and, yeah, anybody else?
I'm tickled that we have somebody in our community that knows our community and knows everything and he is willing to come and assist us through this process, I'm just, just really happy and I so will move the appointment of Blaine Hill to act as our city manager during that interim period for dates and compensation to be determined as we move forward.
I was gonna joke that, uh, between budget and audit season that you really don't feel like stepping up. Knowing, knowing full well what time of year we're going into, um, I, I echo all the comments that have been made so far, right, it's so with that, I will second.
All right, thank you, any further discussion before we ask a, a vote on that? Hearing done, um, we shall, I'll ask a roll call vote on appointment of Blaine Hill as acting manager. Uh, roll call vote on that, please, Stacy.
Councilmember Golexson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Grills?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Thanks again, Blaine.
Thanks, Blaine.
All right, we shall, uh, one thing we'll probably have to do, uh, we tell you we have a, we can probably do that on other business or whatever regarding setting a date for our first meeting, now that we've selected the, uh, search committee we should probably set a meeting for our first meeting, or what do you think? Afterwards, we'll just do it that way? Okay, I didn't know if that was something we needed to formally do now or not, okay, all right, we can work that out later then. Fine with that, city manager's newsletter, we'll move on.
Yeah, so, um, the last few weeks, we've been looking at different options for, uh, work orders and citizen input. Um, the last few years at my review, we talked a little bit about this and kind of what, um, what, what things we could do, so, um, one was civics, civic plus and the other was public input, so, uh, we're still looking at our needs, um, pricing seeing if this is something that we can add to the budget. We did a more in-depth look with civic plus than we did with public input, um, so still kinda looking into all of that. Tree board meeting, so the tree board met on the fifteenth, they discussed the approval of the EAB preparedness plan, talked about the Minnesota DNR relief grant, um, and then the fall tree planting. So the trees for the fall tree planting have been ordered. Um, and then that relief grant, the new grant, uh, that we're going to be applying for um, not only includes trees, but also funding for, um, getting out information on EAB to the public. Um, funding for volunteers to go to training, so right now, all of that comes out of the pocket of those volunteers. Um, and some are overnight stays, so putting that in there, um, and getting dollars for that would be very helpful. And then it also includes indirect costs to, um, include trucks used by public works and staff time. So, um, um, Margaret and Sue have been great at, uh, working on getting that grant written, so um, if you see them, thank them for all the work they do with those grants. Um, the planning commission met to discuss the zoning map, so there were some questions on where lines were drawn in the areas out by the lumberyard. Um, so in the meeting, um, they thought the twenty fifteen maps looked like it went all the way to the road, the new maps look like it's off the road about two hundred and fifty feet. So, uh, Stacy, I and, um, Zach met with Jeff from Woodset yesterday, so he was talking about how the old maps, it was with a CAD system and it was just a strip, you know, it was just a strip. So the intent for out in those areas and why this came up was cause, um, there was a request to possibly split one of the parcels out there and it's in two different zones. Um, so the intent is there, um, we are going, we sent him what the, the planning commission was kinda thinking with the map that he had proposed to us before. So that'll come back, um, later to the, um, planning commission to discuss, um, with the one area, if the intent was there, do we need a public hearing? The other side of the road, we may just because of, um, changing zoning. Um, so they did discuss that we are working on codifying the ordinances and that, um, their input on chapter eleven would be needed as we work through the process. Um, and then also we discussed that in the budget next year, we, um, have in there for the comprehensive plan. Um, so they kinda talked about what their role would, would look like and, um, in that process, so um, that's, that was their meeting. Um, our insurance rates came in, so we had a ten percent, uh, placeholder for our health insurance in the budget. It did come in under budget, so peep is what we currently have, they came in at an eight and a half percent increase. Um, and then, uh, Medica was a percent under them and Prime Health was, um, two percent under a peep. Um, so, Prime Health, we took off the table right away, cause it just wasn't a very good option with a higher deductible um, even though the premiums were lower, uh, we did send out, um, a survey to, to staff to see if they, um, what their thoughts are on switching. So, uh, we wanted to be mindful of how they felt too. Medica, uh, with the consortium had a lower deductible, um, and a lower premium. Uh, and also extra things added on and a no contract term, so, uh, peep was a four-year contract term. Um, it sounds like, um, employees sent back, um, their surveys and, uh, looks like we'll be going with Medica in the consortium. Um, so it'll be, um, a little less than, um, what we were, what we had budgeted for both, um, the premiums and then the deductibles, since we do pay fifty percent of, of the deductibles in the, into HSAs, so.
With that peep on that four-year agreement, if we went that route, is there any out of that, is like a fifty percent?
One, they moved to twenty.
So, the only way we could get out?
Is if they were over a twenty percent increase.
By over twenty percent for any of the years, okay.
Yeah.
I don't agree with that, kind of the contract, so I'm glad that you're not.
Yeah, well, we were really excited that, um, we got two under the ten percent. And then, um, some of the benefits that come with the consortium.
In, in your contract with the, with them, and when it comes to health insurance, is there anything in the contract that when you when you are switching like this, is there a limit to, you know, higher deductibles versus, I'm sorry, um, the deductibles are higher, but the cost is less? You know, I mean, you're, you're working with that.
So we like to, when Doug gets a, a quote for us, he likes to have it co- very comparable to what we already have. Um, so we don't usually see him presenting something and that comes in with a really low premium because of a higher deductible than what we already have, he's, he tries to keep it very comparable to what we already have.
I would see that, but I, I'm just saying that in the contract itself, is there a limitation, I mean, and how? So when you go in there and say, okay, we wanna keep our insurance down, we want lower premiums and we don't care if the deductible goes higher. I mean, I understand where you're keeping it and I'm glad you're doing that, I just was wondering if there was-
No, in the contract, the, in the employment agreements, it just has where the city will pay half of the deductible into the HSA. So it doesn't give a number, it just says fifty percent of the deductible.
Right. I mean, I just wondered about that, cause sometimes it could get into question where maybe the insurance raises twenty percent and it's like, okay, how are we handling that, are we handling that with a higher deductible and keeping our premiums the same and so I, I didn't really know all that went in the contract, so I was curious. But it sounds like that's great, cause obviously we're, we're under what we're-
Yeah, good news.
That's some numbers in the industry that, uh, I would be happy with.
Yes, very much. Um, we had a meeting, a few of us met with the DNR to discuss, um, potential fishing area, opportunity areas um, when, as they go through their dam project. Um, so there was a lot of great discussion on kind of where these areas would be upstream and downstream, though one areas, um, that they had, um, someone from our park board said it might be better to have it right off of, um, where the shelters are instead of, it was right off the parking lot way up the top, so, um, really good discussion there, uh, there will be quite a bit of fishing opportunity spots. Um, and in that conversation, we were told that the kayak areas are not part of the extra dollars that they had for um, for these fishing, um, areas, but they did say that there is other dollars that the DNR has that's available for these kayaking areas, so we kinda discussed that a little bit on where we would wanna see them and, um, there was a lot of, uh, maybe we should see how it all lays out, once it's done and then choose. Um, cause they have this bucket of money for those kinda things, so, um, I think the consensus was to kinda wait and see and determine once the area gets developed to kinda see where these one or two spots could, could be located.
Do we have a timeframe from the DNR when this'll take place?
They didn't say.
Didn't really say, I thought.
I thought it was gonna start-
Twenty twenty-six.
Next year.
It's in twenty twenty-six, of course, but, and beyond that, they really didn't specify.
And the grants for the kayaking would still be there?
That's what he said, he said he had just gotten an email about it that day or the day before that said, hey, these funds are there. Um, so he wanted to let us know. Um, but I can do a double check to make sure, if it's, if he doesn't think they will, maybe let's have those conversations and put it in now.
And they did ask if we had any future plans for that area along there, along the park and you know, my comment to that was, it's really hard to envision what we can do with that area until it's actually developed, because we don't know what it's gonna look like, so, and that is something as we go along, once it gets developed and matures out and we can maybe make some decisions along those lines, but.
I happened to, when I was, uh, going through Pelican Rapids this summer, stop and look, cause that, they had done that years ago.
Yep.
Um, and when it was first done, it looked horrible, I mean, it was like, ooh, but now, this summer, when I went back, they were able to, like you said, develop, put little tables, picnic areas and different grassy, grew grass, actually.
Yep.
Um, where there never was any, so that was a little more comforting to see that, um, that it is possible. It's just might take a few years, but it, it was very nicely done, um, the addition that they as it, uh, over the years, as they added to it, so, yeah.
Um, the Seventh Street project is, um, in the process of curbing gutters, um, they were thinking that they'd have those done last week, um, when I did this, so they were gonna be starting the sidewalks this week if the weather cooperates, which it didn't rain yesterday, which is really good, um, so they're hoping to be paving the first lift in a few weeks.
I did feel the call about the width, you know, and maybe it's a lot, an optical illusion, but it, it looks narrower.
Oh, it is.
Slightly.
It's four feet.
It's what?
Four feet narrow.
From the ballpark on?
Yep. Yep, there's still room for parking on both sides plus two.
I thought we'd, okay.
Yeah.
Is that, well. I thought it was supposed to be the same. No, four, up to four, okay.
Yeah, because if you remember back, part of that was, there was a section, was it fire code or some other?
Up towards Riley's that we had to do a one parking.
Single side parking.
Cause it's a commercial district.
Correct, that's what it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Russ.
And then the lead line assessment, so we still have, um, over two hundred unknowns for lead lines, so um, if there's still funding available from the dollars that were allocated to more for this project, they will be sending out letters um, to those who are still in the unknown, have a unknown line.
Well, I would make a suggestion that maybe they, I happened to be at my daughter's house when they showed up. And she said they'd showed up the day before, well, you got a young girl in there with kids, you're not gonna let two people come to your door in your house. I don't care if they've got the thing on or whatever, so I mean, walking around and trying to get into people's houses, I think there's gotta be I, I, I've just seen that as a, a complete waste of time and money. Uh, you know, given, uh, today's circumstances in the world, nobody's opened their door to people and it's, it's a sad situation, but it's it is what it is, so I don't know if it has to be done by appointment or, um,
And we tried, we sent out letters.
We sent out letters and we were leaving door knockers, you know, just hanging it, and those actually were better than the letters that we sent because it was, you know, something physical and we did get a lot of, we had a online scheduling. So we, that was what we were mainly giving appointments with, the online schedule were. And then when people weren't responding to those online appointments, that's when they were going by and leaving the, the door knockers. If somebody happened to answer, sometimes they were comfortable, sometimes not.
Right.
And that's understandable.
Were, weren't we doing it on, taking pictures and sending it in?
They could do that too.
That was an option and some people did.
Uh, just a suggestion, cause I was like, okay, I, I didn't have a problem that I was obviously there, that I'm gonna show it, but I can see people aren't letting anybody in and I don't think, I don't-
Well, if you were there by yourself, I wouldn't let anybody in. I mean, if I were to, yeah. No, no.
All right. Any other questions off, from the council on our newsletter? Okay, thank you for the update. Uh, we shall move on to mayor and city council board updates, uh, if anybody has anything they would like to share in their boards, various boards that they're on, now is a good time for that.
I've got a couple, um, couple things that came out of the tree board, we touched on the, um, planning commission already. But one of the things was our website terms, did that get updated?
I have not done that yet, no.
Okay, so let's work on that, um, the terms for different boards and commissions were out of date.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which I assume that's probably us as council members as well. Um.
I think we're all updated. I think I just checked that, yeah.
Um, the tree board met with the, um, county at their work session to go over the preparedness plan and they said that it went well, that there was a lot of, um, quality questions that came out of that and, and that that went well, um, so still working through some of those items as well. With them, the biggest one out of all this is gonna be, when this actually hits, where does all this go across the county, you know, so those are the couple of things that wanna touch on from the tree board.
Um, I just had one other thing, well, not really a board update, more on, under other business, so we can wait till I get there.
Okay. And I guess, don't really have anything specific from any of my boards either. Went to a West Central Initiatives meeting last week, talked about a lot of stuff, but really not a lot of things that are pertinent to our community, I guess, per se, so any other?
Oh, I'll just, the airport board met this morning, um, and just, there was the few people that there were very grateful that we're keeping that routine again. Um, they just, so I just wanted to pass that on, like, for a while, it was, you know, only so often, but now it's become more of a monthly thing with the, the fly-in group as a separate entity as well, so, um, yeah. And that has been set for June sixth, already from eight to noon, so that's exciting.
Yeah.
If you weren't there last year or this past summer, this'll be the second annual and, yep, so they're just starting the planning for that, that group.
That was a fun day, we all attended.
Mm-hmm.
I got a kick out of some of them on the planes.
Yeah, how does that correlate, I know council member Miller brought that up.
And it, and it was looked at, right, Becca, and this, the dates, but it's like, we, we can't, you can't find it. You know, you pick a date, there's, all of June would be gone, then you're July and then, and the other thing was the gal, Kyra, I believe her name is from the fly school, the, that, that was the day she could get pilots and help there to you know, otherwise they end their classes, so that was kinda the big thing too, the sooner we can do that, um. But it's just, yeah, I know it interfered with a, a county, not, not even our county, actually, um, it's a community, yeah, neighboring community, but on the other, it's like, there's, isn't a Saturday, there's only so many Saturdays.
The committee really looked at it.
Yep.
And some of the ones in May were just too early, couldn't do it. Um, and then, once you get past that first weekend in June, um, we had, I think we had five students come and help us, um, and we had a lot more planes than we were expecting, so if it goes as well next year that was really needed, um, so she said one- So she said, once that weekend hits, after that, people are taking their tests and they're gone. So that is why that date was picked, even though we knew that it would conflict with Cyrus days.
And that's fair, right? Just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, we try, I mean.
It was looked at.
Looking at the other options and, thank you, that's, that's always asked, to try to see if we can make it work. And if it's just not in the cards, then we go forward, forward with what's best to, to make our event go. But yeah, it was a good time. I was out there last year. A lot of interesting planes and people and talked to people that had just traveled and stopped in from a hundred miles away that were back and stayed in the area and looking at planes and went to school out here, hadn't been back in Morrison many years and, yeah, it was interesting just talking with people. What brought you here today and?
Well, it was pretty emotional for me because I got to have my picture taken by the LifeLink plane that happened to be the same LifeLink plane, plane that flew me from Canada when I had my heart attack up in Dryden, Canada. That brought back some memories. And I said to the guy, the pilot, I said, well, you know, LifeLink, it probably wasn't the same plane that I flew in and he said, no. If it was LifeLink, it was this plane. Because evidently that plane is the only plane for the whole region, covers the whole state pretty much and even, I think, even the tri-county area, the tri-state area. So he said, if you flew in the LifeLink plane, it was this plane. It was pretty, in one respect, I, I'll never forget when they were wheeling me out on the tarmac, I won't bore, bore you with this, but the two air, air medics, when they were wheeling me up, I do remember them both laughing. And I looked at them kind of funny and I says, I, I didn't really think things was too, what's the humor in this, you know? And they said, well, we always, we always have to, we're always concerned about whether or not somebody's actually gonna fit in our plane. Because if you look inside that plane, it's small. And I said, when we seen him wheel you up, we knew. You're gonna fit.
It was fine.
So, two stories.
Your biggest concern was to find your passport, you told me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was a whole other issue. Canadian authorities weren't gonna let me leave the country until I produced a passport. Like I'm trying to fake my death so I can get out of your country. Whatever. Okay, any other things on the board updates? Hearing none, we got a change of date of our meeting from, due to Veterans Day. It's scheduled for the eleventh, so we'll have to come up with an alternate a date for that. That's a Tuesday, so I don't know.
So Wednesday is the park board and I believe the library board meets that day too.
Monday before.
The Wednesday after. So you could do it the tenth, the Monday.
Monday, Monday the tenth would be the day before.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Just do it Monday the tenth then?
Perfect.
Okay. Need a motion on that?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to change that meeting date, please.
I'll move that we change the November eleventh meeting date to November tenth.
Well, second.
All right, same time, same channel, okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All of the polls, same sign. Motion carries. Other business portion, I guess I'll just throw out there, if you haven't drove up by the old middle school property, it broke ground this week for the new apartment complex, so that's kind of exciting. See some progress happening there.
The only thing I was gonna bring up, because we talked about it last time and then, is the, the ordinance, the junk ordinance that Teagan works so hard on, if we could add that to our next, so it's actually on the agenda? Because I did bring mine with notes, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we can just add it and then it would be better. Please, thank you.
Yep.
Do you want me to come to that next meeting then to answer any questions you have?
If you would, that'd be great. Thanks, Teagan.
Any other business to come before the council, before we move on to the next item, which is our citizens comments portion of the meeting and, I don't know, anything else before we move on? Did you receive any communications from anybody about wanting to speak?
No.
No? Okay, well, if we don't have anybody that's indicated they wanted to speak, I guess we'll move on.
Oh, I'd like, I'm sorry, you have to sign up anytime?
Yeah, that's actually part of our new, while we adopt, the city council adopted a policy back in April and part of that policy indicates that we ask that you just report, maybe call into the city manager ahead of time and, and ask for time. I guess I, I guess, the way I look at it is like this, you know, if you take your car, you know, you gotta get an appointment for your oil change, right? If you're gonna go out to a dealership, you make an appointment. You know, I'm just asking, we're just asking for the same type of courtesy extended to us as professionals here around the table. You know, we have another gentleman that's been waiting in the wings here for a while and Ryan, we do have a work session following, so not to be unwelcoming, Charlie, I guess would be the right word, but I guess, you know, we've been at this for about six months, so I guess if you have, unless the council would like to, you can maybe make an exception. I don't, it's up to the council if they want to, but I guess as far as I'm concerned.
Don't tie yourselves in a knot.
Pardon?
The policy gives you the authority to make exceptions.
You have the authority.
Oh, but our policy, I guess, Charlie, I guess I just assume if that was something very, very important, we'll just move on? If that's okay? Okay. I think everybody knows and understands our policy and I think out of respect for time and for Ryan, he's, and, well, we got Dan here also, we'll just move on. Any other items to come before the council? Hearing none?